The Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty four, Inkster City Council meeting is called to order. Everybody please stand for a prayer. Digger Rose. Can you lead us in prayer, please?
In turn to Father Lord, who come right now in the name of Jesus, oh God, bless us today, oh God, that you have me. We shall rejoice and be glad and thank you for this sitting, for this great council and mayor that you have put here in the city, Lord God. You called them, Lord God. That's a great calling, government. It's a calling, oh God. As you regulate their minds, hearts and soul, Lord God, bring them together on one accord that they seek directions, Lord God, to bring this city together in a mighty way as only you can. Bring them up out of this harbor pit, Lord God, and put praises up on their lips, oh God. We thank you right now for what you already do, which you're doing and what you're going to do in the name of Jesus and Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please keep standing for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan. Mayor Polton Chisholm.
President.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
President.
Councilman Bishop.
President.
Councilwoman Richardson.
President.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Great. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda. I think we made a couple changes. We scratched off item F and item I. Anything else we need to add or delete? Yeah, I had lupus under presentation. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? I'm sorry, hold up.
We were discussing about the alumni. Did we conclude we're gonna still leave it on their agenda? Or are you still waiting for more information?
I think we want to see more information because see what they're asking us to provide.
So that's removed.
You know, let's take that off too. That's a good catch. Good catch. Which one was it?
Item E.
E? Okay, so we're gonna take off E. All right, now do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Then probably move the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Before we jump into the presentations, first I would like to acknowledge our new permanent fire chief, Jason Kay. And we also, I don't know if you guys noticed, we have a new city attorney, Todd Perkins. Todd.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to serve you. I did want to introduce one of my ball partners, Dustin Andrews, who's sitting in the back, and there will be other warriors that we intend to bring to the city to serve on your behalf. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks, Todd. Okay, presentations. Let's start with the lupus presentation. Hold up, is that where we're supposed to be starting? Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, I want to give honor to God, who is my life. I want to give honor to the wonderful citizens of Inkster. I want to give honor to the wonderful Inkster City Council. I thank you for this opportunity. I don't count it as a light thing, but I count it as a big thing. So I thank you to Mayor Nolan for inviting me. My name is Dr. Phyllis Long. I am the president and founder of A Journey With Lupus, and I'm also a lupus warrior. In nineteen ninety-four, at the age of thirty-one, I was diagnosed with lupus. What is lupus? Systemic lupus erythematosis is a chronic autoimmune disease that can affect many parts of the body. Lupus occurs when our immune system, which normally helps to protect us from infection and disease, attacks its own tissue. This attack causes inflammation and, in some cases, permanent tissue damage, which can be widespread, affecting the skin, joints, heart, lungs, kidneys, circulating blood cells, and the brain. Who gets lupus? Anyone. Anyone, men, women, children, boys and girls. Lupus affects one point five million Americans, and there is an estimated sixteen thousand new cases each year. Recent research indicates that lupus affects one in five hundred thirty-seven young African-American women. Women get lupus about nine times more often than men. Most often, it happens in people between the ages of fifteen and forty-five. Lupus can occur in childhood or later in life. At birth, an infant with neonatal lupus may have a skin rash, liver problems, or low blood cell levels. But in most babies, neonatal lupus goes away after three to six months and does not come back. There is no known cause or no known cure for lupus. But if you have a family member with lupus or another autoimmune disease, you may be more likely to develop lupus. In nineteen ninety-four, when I was diagnosed with lupus, the life expectancy was ten years. And at that time, I felt so by myself, so alone. And being told that the life expectancy was ten years, I thought I was gonna die. I didn't have anyone to connect with because at the time, I didn't know anything about it. I had never heard about it, never read about it. I had no support group in my Inkster community that could help me to navigate through that whole situation. It was a new me, so I didn't have anybody to connect with. But I'm happy to report that with close follow-up treatment, eighty to ninety percent of people with lupus can expect to live a normal lifespan. It's true that medical science has not yet developed a method for curing lupus, and some people still die from lupus. However, for the majority of people living with this disease, it will not be fatal. And now, there is a lupus support group located in my Inkster community. Lupus awareness is so important because knowledge is power. And when we know better, we can do better. It's so important because our families, our friends, our neighbors need to know how to interact with us because living with lupus is a whole different thing. So when they understand us better, they can help us understand ourselves better. When they're aware, they can help make us more aware. So the lupus symptoms can range from mild to life-threatening. So early diagnosis and treatment by a rheumatologist is very important. A Journey With Lupus. Frustrated by the lack of information and support available for lupus patients and their families, A Journey With Lupus has embarked on a mission to ensure that no one else would have to endure the same isolating experience that I did. A Journey With Lupus is organized as a support group with the purpose of education and providing emotional support so that those who are living with lupus can live the best life possible. A Journey With Lupus helps to impact, hopes to impact, inspire, and bring awareness to this disease, to help those affected by this disease to be healthier, happier, and receive community support. Some of our objectives are to provide support and information to anyone affected by or concerned with lupus. We want to raise awareness of the symptoms of lupus, to encourage early diagnosis, and reduce life-threatening complications associated with this disease. We want to raise funds that will contribute to the future lupus events, case studies, and lupus research for finding a cure. Some of our goals are to have our open house event, to establish a website, to have a free phone helpline. We want to have professionals to come in and give detailed information and advice. We want to increase our social media following. We want to be able to speak at local groups and organizations about lupus. We want to be able to give scholarships to lupus patients. We want to obtain a building for lupus meetings and events. A Journey With Lupus, located right here in Inkster, is organized and operated exclusively for charitable, religious, educational, and scientific purposes, including the making of distributions to other organizations that qualify as exempt organizations under section five oh one C three of the Internal Revenue Code or the corresponding section of any further federal tax code. We are here to help. Is there ever too much support in the world that we live today? There's not ever too much support. To be able to have a safe place to connect, to share our stories, to share different coping strategies, or just an ear to listen, all of these things make for a better community. And some may have relationships that can last for a lifetime. A Journey With Lupus is here in Inkster, ready and willing to help our community where we can. Together, we will fight this disease for a cure. Upcoming event, A Journey With Lupus Open House, Saturday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, from nine to one at the Inkster Park Lower Ridge Parkway on John Daly, north of Michigan Avenue. Keep in touch. Our email address, idirectorone@aal.com. You can contact us at three one three nine zero eight two one zero seven. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. All right, Chief Kay. Just have a presentation and a resolution by the Inkster Fire Department for the GM, Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Program and Mission.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Department heads and citizens. So what I've presented to you is a resolution of support that I'm hoping we can pass tonight. It's in support of the... I haven't put it in yet. This is... So this is in support of the Michigan, the Ground Emergency Medical Transport Program, which is a Medicaid program. There are currently roughly ten states that have enrolled in this program, and their states have adopted it. It is... Yeah, okay, all right. So it's a reimbursement program. So we've been tasked to find creative ways for funding. Michigan currently introduced this, it's House Bill fifty-nine sixty-five. And what I'm requesting is, again, this resolution in support of this bill. It will greatly increase our revenue. Not only, so right now, we bring in roughly a million dollars in revenue through our medical services that we provide. That is the cost for the run. So basically, they're taking the medical equipment. The procedures that we're doing, they're billing for that. This program will basically take our EMS program in total. It will actually take the personnel on the truck. It will divide their hours with their hourly rate. It will take, it'll encompass our EMS program. So currently making a million dollars, we can absolutely double that if this does pass the House. Again, this is for Medicaid participants. The state of Michigan has two point seven million enrolled in Medicaid right now. We're the eighth most in the country. The city of Inkster has forty-five percent enrolled in Medicaid. And on a soft estimate, I would say seventy percent of our EMS runs are from Medicaid. So the city of Inkster stands to benefit greatly financially if this bill is passed. Again, it was just introduced, and right now, I've just presented a resolution in support that I would look forward to the council voting on.
And would you like us to send it to our state rep?
Send it to the state rep, Michigan Municipal League. I already have Sterling Heights, Hazel Park, Ferndale, Dearborn, Madison Heights, Harrison Township. They've already submitted their resolutions of support.
Party Speaker Joe Tate. Thank you, I appreciate that. If I have any questions? So everybody cross their fingers that it passes. All right, we'll move on to the next presentation. Under C, a presentation, a PowerPoint, Inkster Fire Department, for the Public Safety Milletage, outlining terms, not ballot language, but terms. Chief Jenkins, you gonna join?
Okay. Sorry, Troy.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Citizens, good evening. So we're up here to present a milletage proposal to the council and to the residents of the city. Just go down. Twenty twenty-four Police and Fire Milletage Proposal. For twenty twenty-four, the city of Inkster proposed an increase on the tax limitation on taxable property of up to three mil. That's three dollar per thousand dollars of taxable value for a period of four years as a new additional milletage to be used for the purposes of general operation of police and fire services, estimated to provide a revenue of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the first year of collection. The Police and Fire Milletage will be presented to citizens and Inkster taxpayers at the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four election. This dedicated milletage increase will provide a sustainable funding source to support and enhance Inkster's police and fire operations, supporting initiatives like addressing critical personnel needs, enabling police and fire to add, train, and support vital additions to the team. The increase would allow Inkster Police Department to increase its staffing levels from one to two officers per shift and a sergeant per shift to three to four officers and a sergeant per shift. Funding the replacement of necessary police and fire apparatus and other equipment, which has seen significant cost increases over the past few years. Funding increased training for police and fire personnel, helping team members build essential skills so that they can make informed decisions in real time that protect community members, property, and fellow emergency personnel. Adding updated technology and equipment to protect police and fire team members and community members, enabling both police and fire to focus resources on prevention and education and be more proactive addressing community issues. Enhancing police and fire recruitment and retention efforts as fewer individuals pursuing careers in these fields continue to create staffing challenges. Improve response time for calls for service and emergencies. Increase neighborhood patrols throughout the entire community. Reduce the need to transfer general funds away from other township services or other city services, that's what it should read. If the police milletage is not approved, it could translate to an inability to increase staffing to keep peace with the growth of the city, a negative impact on employee retention and recruitment, a negative impact on crucial training programs for police officers, extending equipment and vehicle lifespan beyond accepted best practices and standards, potentially longer wait times for both emergency and non-emergency responses.
Okay, now we're just gonna go into some charts here that make up how Inkster PD and FD compare to the surrounding communities as far as the number of police officers and calls for service for PD.
So Inkster, we have currently twenty-one police officers. Garden City, thirty-two. Dearborn, a hundred and eighty. Ypsilanti, forty-two. The city of Wayne, twenty-one. Dearborn Heights has seventy-eight. Canton, a hundred. And Redford has fifty. So if you look at the second chart, I would like you to focus on Inkster, and this is our calls for service. So Inkster, we have twenty-one police officers, and we have an estimated value of twenty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-three police runs per year. Then I want you to go over to the city of Wayne, who has the same number of police officers. They are totaling fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-three calls for service. So we almost doubled the call volume that the city of Wayne does.
If we look at the fire department, we're gonna explain the same thing. The number of firefighters per call, Inkster is drastically higher than you look at Garden City, Ypsilanti, Wayne. These are departments that have the same number of firefighters as Inkster. And if you look at the run volume, Inkster is seventy-three hundred. Again, those numbers, and why I bring those numbers up, is those numbers equate to revenue. And what's happened is if we aren't... If we don't have the ability to handle all our runs, we have to use mutual aid. So when we use mutual aid, what we're doing is we are, so eighty percent of our run volume is EMS. So our runs are going to other communities. That means our revenue is also going to other communities. If we were able to staff one extra rescue a day, that's gonna be an added hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue that we can, again, add to the general fund. And we talk about the increased costs. Again, I've highlighted a few. And again, we have grants. We are applying for grants. We are keeping all options open, and we are actively looking at different ways to get revenue. It's not, we're not just depending on a public safety milletage. We are definitely doing, actively looking for other sources of revenue. Fire engines, thirty-three percent up in the last three years in costs. I mean, ladder trucks, forty percent. Turnout gear, fifty percent in the last three years. Again, we do, and we are applying for grants. We currently have a grant in right now for turnout gear. We also was awarded a grant for an engine, and we are currently writing a grant for manpower. So we are not simply relying and expecting the citizens to take care of the bill. We are actively searching for funds.
So I guess we should talk about the financial impact. If your home's assessed value is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then that would equate to eighteen dollars and seventy-five cent per month. A hundred thousand dollars would equate to twelve dollars and fifty cent per month. Seventy-five thousand would equate to nine dollars and thirty-eight cents per month. Fifty thousand dollars would equate to six dollars and twenty-five cent extra per month. And then a twenty-five thousand dollar home would equate to three dollars and thirteen cent per month. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We just wanted to get the information out so we can start having a discussion. We'll put the information on the website, so if you want to go back and look at the numbers, you can. It equates basically to more humans. And like Chief Kay said, on the fire side, it translates to revenue. On the police side, it's about service, you know, how many people, the response times, how many people we have out there patrolling. And as we move into technology, where we're trying to gear up and get cameras and more things, people power there too, monitoring the technology. We want to create a command center, and we're gonna outline that more as we get more funds, grant funds in. We're gonna lay out a proposal so you guys can see exactly where we're trying to go in the city of Inkster. The goal is to eliminate crime, and that may be unrealistic, but we can definitely knock a hole in it, you know? As long as we get the money we need, the resources, hire good folks, train them, we can really change the image of our city. All right, we'll move on to, no public hearings, Matt, consent agenda. Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Boards and commissions.
To appoint Abel Lindsay to the Downtown Development Authority.
Probably move the supported discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any additional nominations? Passes.
To appoint Abel Lindsay to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Some moved.
Second. Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
To appoint Ashley Williams to the Grant Committee.
So move.
Second.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To appoint Councilwoman Scott to the Grant Committee.
Some move.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
To appoint Councilwoman Rutledge to the Grant Committee.
Some moved.
Second. Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Got anybody else? Any other nominations? Anybody have?
Expand upon the naked transit stuff?
Oh, we need a volunteer. Naked transit, you have to, each community has to have a representative on the board. Our representative was Denise Champagne. Of course, she passed away earlier this year. We need somebody to replace her so we have a seat at the table. I think it's a monthly meeting you have to go to, you're committed to, and you represent the city of Inkster. So if anybody's interested, or you can think anybody who might be interested, please let us know because we need someone to volunteer. We've been underrepresented for a few months now. Who does?
Miss Shirley Hankerson.
Does she look interested? Can tell by looking at her face? Okay, we'll move on. No ordinances, new business.
Approval and vote in support of provided resolution for the Jim Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Program in Michigan.
Some move.
Probably move the second. Need discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval for birthday party luau, May the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Street to be closed, Oakwood Cross Street, Harrison. Time of event, eight AM to ten PM.
Some move. Support.
Probably move the supported discussion. That was May twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, right?
Yes. And this is just a street closure, correct?
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval for Princeton Block Party Street to be closed, Princeton Cross Street, Metal Dell, and Bayhand. Event time, four PM to nine forty-five PM.
Some move.
Support.
Probably move the supported discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval for Smith Chapel AME Church Festival to be held June eighth, twenty twenty-four. Event hours, ten AM to six PM. Streets to be closed, Walnut, Cross Street, Beach.
You supported before the motion. But we knew what you meant. We probably moved to supportive discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes.
Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel, case number LD twenty-four dash twenty-six. The parcel is located on the east side of Hickory Street between Chestnut Street and Beach Street. Parcel ID noted for fifteen hundred, please see attached Wayne County Public Records.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Probably moved to second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes.
Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel, case number LD twenty-four dash twenty-seven. The parcel is located on the north side of Norfolk Street between Princess Street and John Daly. Parcel ID noted for fifteen hundred, please see attached Wayne County Public Records.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We probably moved to second discussion. All those in favor, ooh.
So this is a parking lot?
It's a vacant, vacant piece of property, they wanna make a parking lot, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier about parking lot. It's all street parking for the house, driveway.
A driveway, okay. Driveways, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. It passes. Public participation. Walter Cooper, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens of Inkster. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Inkster PD's, what I like to call our newsletter, what we're gonna be doing every month. Letting everybody know our events for the month, so you can pick some up at this table right over here. We have a few events going on in June. I won't say all of them here right now, it's quite a few, but one that I'm really, really excited about. We're gonna start a walk-a-mile Wednesday once a month with our Chief of Police, Chief Jenkins. And we're just gonna be choosing different neighborhoods on the flyer. We're starting at Oak Street Health in June, the Vision Center, which is Inkster Housing in July. The Rec Center, August the fourteenth, and September eleventh, it's gonna be, we're gonna kick it off at the Inkster Police Department. Each area, we're just gonna be walking around the neighborhoods, talking to citizens. Everybody is more than welcome to join us to walk, if you wanna get out there and exercise. And as we're passing through, if you wanna speak to the chief, lieutenant, or commander, you'll be able to do that as well. Yes, Lieutenant, we're gonna walk with us. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Padilla Ceres.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yes, well, I'm here concerned about our street. Two-six, three-three-six, North River Park Drive. Well, the concern is really, I guess, the quality of air. Because what happened is, and well, I know you know, the early part of two thousand twenty-three during the spring, we had the water lines replaced. So all the contractors, when they finished, they left a bunch of powder dirt everywhere. So when the cars come by, you get a cloud of dust in the air. And can't let the windows up, your car stays dirty all the time. So, and I think, okay, now, in December, the streets was paved with gravel and dirt. Instead of concrete. So now we still get the dirt in the air, the dust in the air. When it rains, it's mud everywhere. I directed this, it's what, the third time I spoke about this. Trying to get the other neighbors to come down, 'cause just my voice alone, y'all were okay, you know. But it is a concern. Like I said, the quality of air and the streets and the car coming down, they come pretty fast coming down the street. And that's a pretty small street. And it used to be quiet, it was paved, concrete, 'cause I've been there since the July of nineteen ninety-nine. So the streets was paved. You know, we had little potholes, could've dealt with that, but now it's dirt and gravel. And paying taxes to live on a dirt street, no, that's, I would never moved in that neighborhood if it was a dirt street. So that was my, that's my concern, but I just wanna know if anything's gonna be done about the pavement of the street.
Jerome, how big of a stretch is that?
We're looking at something right now.
Okay.
We need a building fill over there, we didn't get money, we're putting the water main in.
Can you talk to the line?
We didn't get money when we put the new water main in to do the street. So we're looking at something, but you know the situation with the road.
We live in where? Could you say that?
The situation with our road for money, we didn't get funded for that road, we got funded from the waterfront to put the new water main in.
Yes.
We didn't get funded for the road, so my engineers and my project manager were talking today, and they're trying to come up with something to appease you guys over there till we can get some money to put a road in.
Yes, 'cause if you go look at South River Park Drive, it's pretty clear, I mean, nice concrete street and no dirt.
I did tear that up.
I know.
Right.
Right, you didn't. But still, we have the problem.
Right, right. I know, I rode through that the other day, so.
Yes, so you know.
We're looking at it, yes, ma'am. So we're looking at something, that's, Mayor, I'll let you know when we come up with it.
It is bad, I've rode down this street.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Miranda Davis.
Good evening, Mayor, the City Council.
Good evening.
Family, citizens of Inkster. I am here today with a big issue. There is value in the City of Inkster. There's value. And we have to have some type of process in place. So when there are vacant lots adjacent to people who have lived in this community, lifelong citizens. They have the ability to purchase these properties before people outside of the country, outside of the community, come in and purchase these properties and do nothing with them. What's happening with the property adjacent to my backyard, it went into foreclosure, and it was owned by the lady, and she gave me permission to discuss this with you tonight. It went into foreclosure, tax foreclosure, and so she did lose it. But I was never informed that it was, that it went into foreclosure. It, you know, the lady next to me was never advised. There is no value to anyone else with this piece of property. It is a no-build zone, it's a small piece of property in the backyards of our property. There is a field behind that property, so there is no houses or anything. You cannot build on this piece of property. So why did a company come in from Canada and purchase a small piece of property? They purchased it because the way that the property lines are cut, it cuts through both of my neighbors' garages and the back pieces of their houses. So now, the neighbors and we are getting letters from this company. They purchased this property, at the time I looked into it, it went for fifteen hundred dollars. They're asking her, they'll give it back to you for thirty thousand dollars. If you don't come up with this thirty thousand dollars, we're putting this on the market, and we're gonna sell this. Whoever purchases this property can then tear down your garages, because it's now their piece of property. And that's the whole thing, we don't know what someone's, you know, you're gonna use some extortion, intimidating, harassive methods to try to push a citizen out of their property. And so, you know, we have to have something in place, like they have in Detroit, where they're advised, the neighbors, the people who are adjacent to these properties are given first dibs on purchasing properties, so that this doesn't happen. We have, we live here, we're committed to this community, but these people outside of the community, they have ulterior motives coming in here. And we have to be very careful who we are selling our properties to. And so we have a problem now with this, with this company, who has hired a company within the United States and has given her a deadline to come up with this thirty thousand dollars. And it's really weird how it was, you know, the property lines are in that whole back area. But I don't know what we need to do, you know.
I was about to ask you that, we are, obviously people can buy the lots next to them. You're saying you want us to notify them that they can buy the lots, or?
Well, yeah, see, there needs to be something in place so that when there's a property adjacent to someone else's house, that those homeowners are giving first dibs on, do you want this piece of property? You know, because a lot of times, we're cutting the grass, we're cleaning it, we're keeping it up anyway. So let's have them have the first dibs versus someone who's just buying outside of the community, they're not cutting the grass. You know, they have no invested interest in our community, so, you know.
I don't think I have a problem with that, but now the question is, how many vacant lots do we own? So we gotta notify, we got hundreds of vacant lots, don't we? So we'd have to send a letter out to both neighbors, letting them know that we own a lot and it's for sale for fifteen hundred dollars, depending on the size of it? That's what you're asking?
Or have something posted on your website to say these parcels, you know, are available, so that it's just a notification. You don't have to send people, you know, letters to everyone, but something where there's some type of notification, so that they have somewhere they can go to see if it becomes available, because you know if there's a lot next to you, you know, but maybe someone outside of the community owns it, maybe eventually it becomes available. And you wanna get control over that lot so that you can clean it up and do something with it. You know, how do we find out before it goes, you know, to Wayne County, and it's no longer in the City of Inkster's hands? And it goes to Wayne County, and then anybody, you know, picks it up, and we don't even know it's available, you know. So how do we get around that?
You mean the land bank? We get, we get most of them. I know years ago, we bought all of the land banks, vacant lots in Inkster, the city bought, so we controlled them all. Now I'm not sure what's happened the last couple of years, but we can definitely, we can definitely post on the website, 'cause that doesn't cost us anything. So we can definitely look into that, Derek.
Currently, we do have the, all the parcels that we own, generally, a lot of them are vacant, so they don't have an address per se. It may say the street, but unless you know where the parcel numbers are, how that matches up.
We gotta make it easier, because me looking at the parcel number, it's not gonna tell me where that parcel is at. I mean, I need to see it next to this address or next to that, we gotta figure out how we do that.
I don't know what we can do for this particular situation, because we don't want somebody extorting, you know, our citizens, like they are doing when they purchase something for fifteen hundred dollars. Now you're saying thirty thousand dollars on a no-build area that you can't use anyway, but you're just, you did it because you were going to do this. You know, you purchased that piece of property to do this, and that's what I don't like about it, it's not, you know, I would've purchased it just to keep this situation from happening. But, you know, this is the situation, and I know we have a new attorney, maybe it's something we can legally do to step in. But she did forward me the letter, she did state that when she reached out to them, that they were going to be contacting myself and the other neighbor to see if we were willing to pay thirty thousand dollars to purchase this piece of property.
Can you send me that letter, please?
And I can send you that letter, yes.
Again, may I please, Council, you know, I personally had an experience like this, and, you know, I would suggest getting a lawyer. Because what you might have the right to have is a permanent easement. And that's where, sometimes when you see the gas company or the light company has the right to put telephone poles or electric wires on certain areas for the purposes of running a community. This structure seems to have been there for a certain period of time, and these people have detrimented, any purchaser would detrimentally rely upon that structure being something that's part of this property, not knowing. I understand you're supposed to get a survey if you buy a piece of property, but if you've been there all this time, you didn't know. So, you know, my experience was, we negotiated a permanent easement. We sued, well, we were sued, and then we negotiated a permanent easement, which meant that the structure was stated. The next door, the neighbor to me didn't want any money, this person clearly is profit-generated issue. And then you also have an issue of the right to own that property, because you've owned it ostensibly or used it ostensibly publicly for over fifteen years, if that's the case. But I would suggest getting a lawyer, but more long going in the future, I think the city could rely upon treasurer for assistance in giving an notification to neighbors, because they're the ones who actually undertake the process of selling both those properties. And, you know, they're going, it's been a big change in the treasurer's office, what's been happening and how that, how these changes are instituted. But they do, in some areas, they have given notice. You know, I have some rental property in Detroit, and I've gotten notice from the treasurer. So I think that that would be, if the council would like us to look into that, to see how that is. But I would recommend actually talking to a lawyer to see what your options are, because there are options. You know, if that structure's there, if this is part of your property, then, you know, that just shouldn't happen.
Yeah, as soon as I like to.
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna say, why don't you all look into it, can you just let us all know too, 'cause, one, it sounds like a scam. And then, two, just from working for the utility companies myself, and just backing, or piggybacking on it, Attorney Perkins said, a lot of times with those utility easements, and even with the alley accesses back there, we never vacated, but people just extended their yards. Sometimes that property is still ours in the first place. But we just allow people to, you know, to cut it, so I, just that way we can help our residents out if this were to ever come up again, so we can definitively explain it.
Okay, we'll get an answer back to everybody. Peggy Bishop Lucas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I really just wanted to speak to what Ms. Miranda said, because sometimes our elderly people will buy a home, and then they'll buy the lot next to them. And sometimes when they pass away, their family don't realize that the home and the lot are two separate entities. And so the house, they may be paying their house taxes, but don't pay the lot taxes. And before you know it, it does end up down at Wayne County. And people do actually purchase people's garages as a, like everybody is discussing, attorney has said it, but they do it as a way to make money. And so when you see me up here every week, you are selling the city property, that is your property. If you have a property next door to you, and you wanna know if it's available, please call. It's not a problem, that's our property, and that's what we're doing, we're selling property. When you see me, please don't hesitate, if you have a lot next to you and you're interested, please call. There is a lot of lots, like the mayor said, in the city that is available, that's very unfortunate that that happened. But some of the lots that are next to you, don't assume that they actually are part of your lot, you may wanna double check. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Tripple.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Department of Health and Citizens of Inkster. I am just here just to let you all know that our office will be closed until, our office, meaning the Department of Public Service, will be closed to the public until June the tenth for renovations. Our phones are still being answered, so if, we are working on emergencies. So if you have an emergency, you can call us at area code three-one-three, five-six-three, nine-seven-seven-four. If you're calling for anything else, you just call the number, the phone will be answered, and we'll schedule to take care of it after June the tenth.
Everybody got that?
Any questions?
The effective date of closure?
Effective date of closure, as of now?
Yes. Yes.
Until June the 10th.
All right, thank you. Barbara Albert and Tanya Humphrey.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening, mayor.
We are coming on behalf of Juneteenth parade. We submit our paperwork, and we're trying to find out where we are with it right now.
The paperwork was submitted after the agenda was done, and it's gonna go on the next agenda.
Okay.
First meeting in June?
Yep. Yes.
Well, we, I'm sorry. Will we have enough time to get that approved? Yeah.
Yes.
And, um, microphone.
All right, I lost my train of thought here, saying microphone. Okay, so, yeah, so we were here for the Juneteenth celebration and for the peace walk. And could I share something for the peace walk? Yes, no?
Yes, sir.
All right, good, thank you. So, I found a little piece of something that I thought would go with the peace walk. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. And this, I pulled out of the Word of God, and it said, and it was from Galatians 5:13. And it says, and it's a part, it goes with the peace walk. And it said, "You, my brothers, were called to be free, but do not use your freedom to indulge the sinful nature, rather serve one another in love." Their entire law is summed up in a single command, to love your neighbors. That's what this peace walk is about, to love your neighbors, okay? And as yourself, if you keep on biting and devouring each other, watch out, because you will be destroyed. Oh, you will be destroyed, I can't even read my own writing, by each other. Love your neighbor as yourself. And then, in Matthew, and I have to bring this to you. It says the same thing, love your neighbor. We have just so much going on in the city of Inxter. So much hate in the city of Inxter. And this peace march, Tanya and I, we did this in 2011. And so, we calling out all of Inxter residents to come out, especially our churches. And somebody said something about a mile, I wrote it down, what'd he say, walk a mile? With the officers, we looking for you, chief and the officers, we looking for you all to head us up, okay? I can't make signs until we get an okay, all right? But we here, this is our city, I love this city. A lot of places I go to and I tell people I live in the city of Inxter, they're like, it's so bad. I said, it's not. A lot of the stuff that you hear on the news and what's happening is retaliation stuff, all right? I would like to see us, the city of Inxter peace march, look like the all-class reunion. When I first went to the first all-class reunion, I was floating for about a month or so. I remember so much love over there. And we gonna have to love each other. We gonna disagree, we gonna agree to disagree, but we gonna have to love on each other, all right? Do I gotta preach a sermon here for y'all? Thank you.
Clint McDaniel.
All right, this is my first time to the podium. Welcome, council, department heads, citizens of Inxter. I'm here to talk about our upcoming Memorial Day parade, which the mayor handed me the task of, and I thank him for that. Sarcastically, anyway. So, it's, we're getting that stretch run. It's Monday, coming up as we know, the 27th. So this is just a reminder, put it in everybody's mind, to come out and participate. This is our flyer. There are more of these available at the rec center, along with applications. We got a lot of verbal commitments for people and organizations to be in the parade. We haven't had a lot of people actually sign up and give us paperwork, so we're looking for a big turnout. This year's theme, per the mayor, is come out and ride your bikes. I wanna see families out there riding their bikes, the fancy bikes, the motorcycles, any other bikes. We just wanna see people out there, want it to be a good turnout. It's my first one as the director of Parks and Rec, so we've been putting a lot of time and effort into it, trying to get the people involved. Actually, the group that was here tonight, that wanted the block party approved, the Riley family, they have a car club with the Broncos, and they're gonna, they've committed to show up and ride their cars and throw candy to the kids along the way. So, we've been meeting, the police department, PD, fire department, everybody's playing a role. We wanted to be a big success, but we need our citizens to come out to pass the word. If you wanna sign up, go to the rec center, I have more of these with the application piece available. So please, let's make this a big turnout and a big deal and a bright spot for our city. Thank you.
What time they start?
Oh, yeah, that's the most important part. So we're gonna be staging at 10 a.m. on Memorial Day at Hamlin Drive. So we're gonna go head east on Michigan Avenue from the post, from the post office. We're gonna end up coming down Bayhand and in front of the War Memorial and down here in front of City Hall, where there'll be judges, I assume, judging bands and dancers and different things of that nature, whatever we can get.
Who's bikes?
And bikes, and best bikes and things like that. And also, we're gonna have the horses. And like I said, PD, they're gonna ride some vehicles that they have that may be unique. And we've got the fire department bringing the engines, so it should be a good time. And the parade actually starts at 12, at noon, and it'll end when we get that, when everyone gets down here. So, bring your families, bring your bikes, people walking. We like to see council, we like to see all of you out there anticipating, get some exercise, riding a bike, walking, whatever we need to do for you. So, look forward to seeing everybody on the 27th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brandon Burks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I came because of the deer, skunks, especially the groundhogs and cats. The young man who does the animal control, he came and did what he could with the cats. But he said, for the other critters, I had to go through DNR. How do you do that? What did?
You know, you know the process, right? We do it for deer, so.
Deer? I just got something yesterday.
Yeah.
Can't get through. Yeah, I'm like, should I write a letter? Do they have an office around? I'm not, I'm not the only one. And those groundhogs are vicious. I got a deer right here on my phone right in front of my house, two days ago. You'll help me how to go about that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think we saw our state rep slide in here. Dylan, come on up and address us.
Hi, good evening, council, mayor, and audience members. Couple of things for, I think people are starting to get to know me, but still in my rookie season. So for those of you who don't know me, I was a, my name's Dylan Magella. I was a school teacher for seven and a half years. I was a union president for two of those years. I grew up in Michigan. My great-grandmother actually lived across from Booker T. Dozier. A lot of people don't know that, but my mom spent a lot of time over here as a kid. I live in Garden City with my wife, Anna. She is a, was a social worker, is now a therapist. And just proud to be in this role and proud to represent the great city of Inxter. And kind of doubling down on what Barbara was saying earlier. I've knocked fifteen thousand doors in the last three years. I have been treated nowhere better than in the city of Inxter. There is a lot of love here, and I recognize that. I've been invited in homes, I've been given bottles of water, et cetera. That being said, we are in the budget season in Lansing. We're in the process. The House and Senate have passed their versions of the budgets. And now, what we're gonna be doing this week is zeroing those out. It's a procedural move to make a conference committee. So we have this great omnibus budget. And that's when you'll see like special projects essentially get added into the budget at that stage. So, I'm fighting for a lot of things in the budget, but like kinda greater scheme in the budget. One of the things I truly believe in trying to make and maximize is that I believe that public dollars should stay public. And in the budget, if you read the fine print, there's all of these little carve-outs and what I would call handouts to different organizations, that might be private organizations. Like, for example, one of the things I'm trying to fight to get rid of, and I like hyper-read the details, is there's a nine, in the House budget, there's a nine million dollar rebate for ethanol 15, which is, you know, fuel for jet, is jet fuel essentially. So we're giving a rebate for companies that sell this. And I don't believe that's a good use of public funds. So, I won't go into all the details of the thousands of pages budgets, but I wanna make sure we're investing in public spaces with public dollars. Speaking of just knocking on doors, I'm working my way through the districts here in the city. And hopefully, this hasn't been too big of a headache, but when people have local issues, I share their local council member's phone number. So if you've been getting some phone calls, I apologize, but I also want people to know who they can reach out to. The big things I hear on the doors here are, people really don't like the sycamore trees. And I know that there's been some work to get rid of those, local road funding. So I'm pushing at the state level to try to make the budget have more money go to local roads, rather than just the state roads. Among other things, there's a whole range of things. But I have coffee hours every second Thursday of the month in Garden City at the Radcliffe Center. And the reason we've done one location this year, last year I jumped from city to city to city, and people were getting confused on where I was gonna be. So every other month, we do two coffee hours and we rotate the cities. And every month, I do a coffee hour at the Radcliffe Center in Garden City. It's the second Thursday from 5:30 to 6:30. Please come on out. We, I usually do a little presentation, a Q and A, et cetera. One thing I don't wanna skip over, and I almost did, is the big thing that I'm working on, and I'm really excited about this. I like to say that I make, if you know anything about me, I make some good trouble in Lansing, is what I call it. I'm sure not everybody feels that way. But I've been working with ten different grassroots organizations, the League of Conservation Voters, Detroit Action, Emergent Justice, Moses Justice, Voters Not Politicians, Michigan United. And we introduced bills in February that would ban utility companies from donating and dark money pathways. I've been taking on DTE head-on. Last October, I wrote a article in the Free Press that got published, talking about this issue. One of the things that we see is DTE donates more money to politics than any corporation in the state of Michigan. Ninety-three percent of legislators take money from DTE. I don't. And I've been trying to stop their ability to donate, because they made a billion and a half dollars in profits last year. Every time they ask for a pay increase, they get it. And I think a big problem is the influence that they have. Bills do not pass if DTE doesn't want them to pass. So what we're trying to do is get legislators to sign pledges supporting this legislation. We've, we've got a good deal of them so far. I don't remember the exact number, the coalition's kinda leading that. My philosophy is to let the grassroots lead, because change comes from below, it doesn't come from the top. And we're also introducing another bill that would ban all monopoly corporations in the state of Michigan who receive state contracts from donating in secret money pathways. Those are money pathways you can't track, so 501(c)(4)'s, which are political nonprofits and super PACs, 527's. I tell you this, because when I introduced this legislation, the Detroit News asked me, what are you gonna do when DTE spends a hundred thousand dollars to get you out of office? This is the kind of politics that are being played with our electricity, with our utilities. And I just think that should be on people's radar. We're gonna do a town hall sometime this summer. I don't have a direct date, but I'll try to get that information out in the pathways that I can. Because I think until we solve this issue of corporations essentially, in my words, and buying our politicians in Lansing, we aren't gonna see the real change that we need to. So, I think we need to unite on that. And I, I think there's gonna be a movement for local governments to pass resolutions in support of it as well. Would love to have further conversations about that. I'll wrap up, trying to keep this as brief and concise as possible. For anyone who's looking to reach out to our office, we just got a new constituent service director, who I, who worked with the governor and then worked with Winnie Brinkes in the Senate, has come to work for me. I love that, and worked for us in the district. Our email address is my first and last name, that's D Y L A N W E G E L A at house dot M I dot gov. And our office phone number is five one seven three seven three three eight one eight. And if none of those pathways really work for you, I imagine there's at least several people in this room, in the audience and up here, that have my direct cell, so don't be afraid to ask for it and find a way to get in contact with me. Hopefully, that was concise enough. And that's, yeah, thank you.
Before you leave, can you talk to the fire chiefs about the ground emergency medical program?
Yes, will do.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Just briefly, the clerk's office have been mailing out, doing a mass mailing of voter registration cards. We've been pulling the list daily from our QBF system. If you have not received your voter's registration card, please stop in the clerk's office, we do print on sight.
Okay. Our city treasurer, we finished our budget study sessions. The budget will be, what's the, the first, June 3rd? June 3rd, we will be, the budget will appear on the agenda for us voting on it. So, please come to that meeting or let us know if it's something in the budget you like to see or you don't like, or something like that. Let us know before June 3rd. All right, mayor and council communication. Councilwoman Richardson.
I'm done at this time, thank you.
Councilwoman Howard. Uh-oh, in a row. Councilwoman Scott. Councilwoman Bishop. Shop extra. Councilwoman Roberts.
Well, I have a couple announcements. Spring Hill is doing a Juneteenth celebration on June 15th at 3 o'clock. So come out and support that. I'm actually gonna be their mistress of ceremonies. I've never done that before, so I'm kinda nervous. Come out and support though. We would like to do paint the city pink. So, the mayor has informed me that there's an organization that does this already. So if you're listening to this council meeting, please contact the mayor's office. We would like to know who you are so we can help to help you enhance this.
You guys, y'all remember the lady who, they were putting pink bowls on houses, in cancer awareness, but, do y'all, do you know the lady's name? Alicia Butler, okay.
Alicia Butler, okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, I got that, Alicia Butler. Also, I'd like to thank Inxter resident council for the beautiful Mother's Day brunch that they had. I participated in that, and it was just a beautiful time with a lot of, got a lot of motherly love in there. And the last thing is, I'm sure I probably was the last person to know, but DTE is in the area. I came home, my, half my yard was dug up. They are putting down gas lines. So if nobody knew this, I just wanted to let you know, DTE will be on your street at some point in time. And I just wanted to make that announcement. That's it, mayor.
Mayor, protest? Nothing. Oh, wow. That's unusual for you. I just wanna say for the record, I did not get a brunch invite on Mother's Day. Still upset about it. Don't forget the, we have a summer camp meeting tomorrow at 5:30 at the rec center. All those interested in helping out with the summer camp. The chief and Mr. Cooper, we need to probably touch base tomorrow before the meeting. But good meeting, we're gonna pull out the calendar and actually put some dates down and get some stuff plugged in. Had a good meeting at the last meeting. And don't forget about the graduating seniors event, I think it's tomorrow at 7? Same place, at the rec center. We're gonna acknowledge our graduating seniors from the four different, or from whatever school district. So we're doing that tomorrow at 7 o'clock. If you have a chance, stop by, tell them congratulations and, you know, let them know that we are following, tracking them and looking forward to them and their next steps. All right, anything else? You have a motion to adjourn? Probably move, second discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose nay.